Good afternoon. Welcome to a special meeting of the zoning board of appeals being conducted hybrid today. Some attendees will be on Zoom. All materials are available on the town's website for the public to follow along. This meeting will feature public comment. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand and you will be recognized to speak. Please say your name for the minutes. And if there are questions, please ask them through me. I think that's it. So I'd like to open this special zoning board of appeals meeting, this 19th of February 2005 at 1:06. Would someone approve the agenda as drafted?
Sue moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we can move right along to our first and only matter of business under Old Business 2524 Surfside Crossing LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B. I see the applicant is in the audience. Attorney Paul Haverty is in the audience and Don Bracken is in the audience for the applicant. To start off the meeting, George is on, yes?
Yes, Mr. Pucci and Mr. Chalk.
Yes, I'm here. Hi.
So I think I'd like to have first from you, George, an update on the, on two things. One, the extension request motion that you filed. And two, I understand that you spoke with representatives from Bristol, the Geo-Hydralit, oh my God, Geo-Hydra. I can't say, I can see it in my head, but I can't say it. The consultants about the updating of the report.
That is a mouthful. I have trouble saying words sometimes. First of all, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is George Pucci from KP Law. I'm sorry I can't be with you in person this afternoon. I had a previously scheduled 40B hearing tonight that I would not have been able to make it to if I had been in person with you. So I'm joining you by Zoom. To update you, I did file the request for further extension as the board had requested. The HAC, I don't really know the basis for it, but they didn't grant it in full. They granted it in part. And they granted an extension of the deadline to close the public hearing to March 4, which doesn't give you a lot of time, but it is something. So I recommend that you take advantage of that because you'll recall, you know, you have 40 days to issue the decision following the close of a public hearing. So that would, I wouldn't continue today's hearing to the 4th strictly for the purpose of getting the longer time for deliberation, but I certainly think you have enough before you and anticipating further comments today that it would benefit the board if you were able to keep the hearing open for a further public hearing session on March 4, if that's possible. In terms of Bristol Engineering, I did follow up with the town manager immediately following your last hearing session and requested authorization to reach out to them to have them update their report. The town manager did promptly authorize that request. And I reached out to Bristol Engineering and I spoke with, we scheduled the call for this morning at 9:00 AM and I spoke to the signatory to the original report from 2018. It was Peter Newton for Bristol. It will be tough for him to be able to review the, you know, the new materials before you related to stormwater issues in order to render an update to his report by March 4 by the close of a public hearing. But we're going to do our best. He's going to provide a proposed engagement letter that'll get authorized by the town manager so that he can undertake the work. And I'll provide him with the, you know, consultant reports, both from land council and the applicant related to the issues for updating his hydro report. So if he could get you something by the close of the hearing on the 4th, great. If he doesn't, I certainly don't think it would be a waste of time and effort and money of the town to get an update to the report. I certainly think it would be relevant and you never know how this will turn out. You know, we may, it may be of relevance to us in the event of any potential appeals. So if it's okay with the board, that would be the first place that the request comes from. I will go ahead and when Mr. Newton provides me the engagement letter, I'll seek immediate authorization from Libby. And then he can go forward with that review and provide a supplementation to his report as soon as possible. If it's after the close of a public hearing, you won't be able to take that in and consider that as part of your deliberations. But again, I think that it would be useful information and we can deal with the timing of it, you know, depending on when, when we actually receive the updated report. So I can answer any questions that you might have about that.
Okay. Billy.
I did just want to add that I did confirm we can have a Zoom-only meeting on March 4. And I mean, just for, I could set it up at 1:00. I could set it up really at any time. We have to keep in mind HTC needs NCTV at 4:00 PM that day. So 1:00 would be fine. Or even if you want it at 11:00 AM, I can look into that that day. But we can do a Zoom-only meeting that day.
And Madam Chair, can I just mention some, one last thing related to this? In the event that, you know, it's up to you and the board if you want to, at the end of today's session, if you want to continue to that date certain of March 4. One thing that I would recommend is if, if the board's inclined to do that, you know, I would recommend strongly, and again, I defer to you, Madam Chair, about how you run your meetings, but I would recommend taking in as much information, you know, that of anyone wishing to make further submissions to you or, you know, speak to you orally in the hearing session. And then when you're, when it looks like maybe you're done with that, maybe the, you know, you want to bring it back to the board to start discussing the board member's thoughts about, you know, a potential decision. I had said before, you know, these types of processes are best in the context of the public hearing, the more that you can discuss an actual decision during the public hearing so that in case any questions or comments come up, you can address those to others as part of your process. I would recommend that you go ahead and do that. And I also just wanted to mention for today, I'm not going to be here raising my hand and seeking to interject. So just keep in mind, you have me here today. So if anybody has any questions for me, I will speak when spoken to. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much for filing that motion and that was, I'm grateful that we got the extension that we did. And I think that is great forward progress on the Bristol update. Fingers crossed that they can get us something before the 4th of March, even if it's just preliminary, so we can have any, any new information before we, where we have to close the public hearing. So I agree, since we have today, my goal was to have as many members of the public and audience speak on this matter to make sure that we get everyone's testimony that, and input that wants to have input before the public hearing is closed. I think if, since this is the only matter on the agenda, I think if people who are willing to, or want to speak that are on Zoom, if you could raise your hand so staff can make a list, at least for themselves, to, to go through that and we'll call on people in an orderly fashion. I don't think that we will, you know, within reason, limit people on their, on their time as that's really the, the one thing that we're going to discuss today or have on the agenda today is to hear what people have to say. That said, you know, please try to be respectful of everyone else's time with, if you are repeating what someone else said or, or supporting what they said, you don't need to repeat everything. You can just simply state that you're supporting what the person before you said and then add on to it as needed. And we'll see, we'll see where that, where that gets us. And I assume, I don't have a separate, I didn't have like a separate time to talk about the Weston Sampson letter because I figured people in the public are going to talk about that and we'll move through that as we, as we go. So do you have people with their hands up? So at this time, we have Megan Perry with her hand raised.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question for Billy. There was a, on the list of documents, there's a, for today's meeting, there's a letter from someone, but it's not, doesn't identify who wrote it or if we received it. You know, normally you stamp it. Yeah, I was just curious.
And then, and just while Billy's doing that, so in the audience, who do we have to speak? So, okay. So Mr. Zemicki, tell me your name again. Sean, is it Sean Reardon? Mr. Sean Reardon, Dennis Murphy and Emily Molden. Okay. Okay. Is it on the post, is it on the posting for the, but just doesn't say who wrote it?
Yeah, I was curious.
Okay.
We can, we can.
We'll track it down.
Move on.
My mic's not on. It's from Nantucket Tipping Point. And you know what? There were a few attachments from them on this, so I apologize, but that is, and it, the PDF is entitled NTP February 3.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I think we can start if you want to bring Ms. Perry over.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I also wanted to note that Paul Duransis just raised his hand as well.
Okay, so we'll start with Megan and then we'll go to Paul.
Megan, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. I thought we were just raising our hand for people who wanted to speak throughout the meeting. Is that correct or do you want me to speak now?
Well, that's correct and you can speak now if you, I mean, you submitted a bunch of items.
We did.
If you want to, yeah, if you want to go through those and address them.
Okay, I also have a witness who I wanted to have speak, testimony. I just needed to let them know roughly what time, just because they have jobs. So I was raising my hand for that point as well. So if, I'm happy to speak now, I'm happy to wait till public com, but what would you prefer? I'm happy to speak now and then have the person come on later if you'd like.
So it doesn't matter to me. If you want to speak now and have your person speak right after you, that's fine. If you want to defer and let Attorney Duransis go first and you can talk to your person and then Duransis can go and then you and then your person, that's fine as well, whatever you think is going to be easier.
That sounds great. Why don't I do that so I can get them online?
Okay, so, okay, yep. So Attorney Duransis, we're going to give you the opportunity to start off the discussion.
Thank you. I actually had two questions. And a more formal presentation that would be about 20 minutes long, but.
Okay.
Let me just do the two questions now. The first is, are we going to have another substantive hearing between now and, and March 4? Or is there going to be no hearings during that period of time?
There's going to be no period, no hearing, sorry, no hearings during that time. I don't believe we'll have quorum.
But you can have them remote. So if somebody's even, you know, vacationing down in the Caribbean or Gulf of America, they call it, yes, now, they can still access the meeting and participate.
I think it would be, I don't think that's going to happen. And we don't have any scheduled right now. I don't think that we are anticipating any new submissions before the 4th, other than hoping for this update from the Bristol engineers, if possible, if that will come back. So that's, that's not scheduled right now and I don't think we will.
The other question is, but before I leave that, I would, I would urge you to have more hearings because we have a number of witnesses and they're not all available today. We do have one that we do want to present today. But that may trigger somebody wanting to respond to it and so on and so on. Anyway, the other point was this updating by Bristol. We have some specific questions we hope that Bristol would address. And we're wondering, is it possible for us to have Bristol address some issues that we'd like them to address?
Well, at this point, my understanding is that we've asked them, we've asked permission from town administration and asked the consultant for an update to the report that they did, which I think was dated 2018. So if those questions fall into the scope of what was provided in 2018 and seemingly to be updated, then they will most likely be addressed. But I don't, I guess you, you could submit specific questions that, to see if those are within the scope, but I don't, I don't see a path towards directing the town consultant to answer specific questions that way. But, right, so if, I guess, if, I guess the path to find out that answer would be to submit those questions through staff and then have, I guess, we'll see if, if those can be submitted to Bristol or if they're outside the scope of the review.
So the issue that we want to address has, has been addressed by Bristol in their earlier report. And we want to simply make sure that they reiterate, let's put it that way, in their update, the fundamental truth of statements made in their prior report.
Okay.
Chair, I just, I mean, I guess this is a question for George. You're happy that it was extended to the 4th. I'm disappointed because we, this is one of the main reasons why we asked for an extension. So how do we treat that if we, George, if we, if they won't extend it so that we can get pertinent information? And we're not able to obtain that, you know, what does HAC expect us to do? Are they trying to handicap us in some way?
Right, and thank you for remembering what I said at the beginning, that I'm, I'm going to speak when spoken to because I did have a couple of comments from Attorney Duransis' input and, and I waited for someone to ask me, right, it, and I should clarify, it's nothing on the town's end that has delayed this. It's, you know, we followed up with a consultant that issued a report in 2018. As you might imagine, he has a schedule with other issues as well. So, you know, it's being expedited as, as quickly as reasonably possible. What I, what I'd recommend is, you know, we just continue to act quickly and diligently on it. As soon as I get the proposal from him, I will immediately seek authorization from the town manager who responded immediately last time. Once that's approved, I'll do my best to try to get that update by March 4. And we'll just have to see where it's at. If it's worthwhile filing a motion related to that specifically at that time, we could always do that. You know, and even if the, even if we think the HAC is inclined, because it's the second request, that they keep granting these, you know, small extensions that really, you know, aren't what we're seeking, even if we think that they might, you know, deny another extension, maybe they, they can, you know, we can seek relief related to that update, that that is part of your record on these proceedings. But it's tough to answer until, you know, we know exactly what the consultant's schedule is, once that proposal is approved, how quickly he can move on it and what the state of his review is by March 4. If he needs just a little bit more time, I think that it would be entirely reasonable for us to go back to HAC again and explain specifically, okay, we've dealt, you know, as best we can within the parameters that you're imposing on us, but at least extend the, you know, our ability to take in this information as part of this public hearing. I think that that would be reasonable relief to seek at that time. And one thing, hopefully that answers your question, but one thing I wanted to note with what Attorney Duransis is requesting, remember, this is a, you know, we're seeking to engage this consultant to be paid, authorized and paid for by the town. This isn't a peer reviewer or somebody, you know, that's open to everyone to serve as their consultant. So what I would recommend would, would be, anything that they seek to have addressed in that report has to come through us. You know, would go, you know, they can submit it to Billy or they can contact me directly about what, you know, additional information or what they want to make sure is covered in the scope of his engagement. Because that, that would also require authorization from the town to, you know, that, that his, his review would include those additional issues. So that would, that would be how I would recommend the board treat that request.
So if I could just interrupt this for a minute, our witness is ready to testify. And I'm wondering if you would allow me to suspend my remarks and have you call upon that witness at this time.
Of course. What, what's the person's name?
Timothy Lepary.
Okay.
M.D.
And before you get to that, Susan, did Jim have a specific follow-up? I thought I saw him, I'm watching on, you know, on my phone. I didn't know if he had a follow-up question for me.
Not real, George, I wasn't being critical of you, I was being.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't take it that way. I thought maybe you had a follow-up question after what I said.
Just, I'm surprised that the town, this is not a peer review and treated as such. I mean, I think our rules are pretty, pretty well-defined. I'm not sure why the town is paying for this.
Yeah, I would have to agree with you, but it was very clear from the app minute of the last hearing, you can ask them again, that they were not going to include this in peer review fees. So that, that was why I, I went through the town manager right away anticipating that they were not going to agree to that. But I would agree with you. I think it would be, you know, reasonably within the scope of peer review. But if they're refusing to do it and you're pressed for time, you know, I went to option B and option C.
Yeah, no, I realize that, but I want it noted that those procedures are pretty clear. And if they disagree with it, then they go to the select board. We don't go to the select board.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Yeah.
So.
The only thing is, you have to keep in mind, as a practical matter, if they're not paying for it, then you end up, then engagement, next for it works and they're not getting paid and the applicant's refusing to fund it. And then, then you end up with a problem. But I agree with you totally. It would be better in the context of peer review.
Thanks.
Before we go to Dr. Lepary, I see Attorney Haverty is at the podium and I'm assuming you want to respond to that.
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Thank you again for the record. Paul Haverty, Blat Mubabrowski Haverty and Silverstein representing the applicant. Our position last time is the same as our position right now, which is that this is an independent study that was conducted on the part of the town, that the town is looking to update. It is not something that is legitimately within the peer review process. The peer review process is only allowed to be reviews of studies conducted by the applicant and it's a review of those studies. It is not an independent study to be conducted by, by a third party, which is why we're not willing to fund this because it's not within the scope of the sort of things that are allowed to be subject to peer review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, I disagree. I mean, this goes to the water quality issue and.
Yeah, I, I agree with you as well and I think we're.
Again, this is, is this being uncooperative? I think so. Is this being, I don't consider this good faith or cooperation, cooperative in any way with the town or this board.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Mr. Lepary, or Dr. Lepary, rather, sorry. I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you very much. My name's Tim Lepary, 46 Prospect Street. I'd like to discuss this proposed development at the corner of South Shore and Surfside, Surfside Crossing. Now, I've followed it from a distance. I'm not a fireman. I'm not a developer. I'm not involved in any way, but I see problems and they're very important to me. I think the access road question is a real problem. I think that the fire department is probably not going to be able to get down this in the event of a fire. People are going to panic, clog the roads, and so the fire department won't have access to this area. Now, I don't drive a fire truck, never have, but I've spoken to several of the firemen and they feel it would be very difficult to maneuver in this area in the event of a fire in one of these buildings. And that's without the cars. I think this plan should be reviewed at the state level by the state fire marshal and see if they agree that the plan is safe or that it requires modifications, given the island's limited manpower in the fire department and limited to no access to mutual aid. I know an evaluation of the plan has been done by a company that was paid for by the developers. This isn't casting aspersions on them, but I'm thinking having an outside party, a governmental unit to evaluate the plan is the best way to go. In my career, I've been involved in a couple of big fires. Providence College in the late 70s, where approximately 10 young women were died of burns or jumping off of roofs. The fire was started very innocently with some Christmas decorations. There's nothing like going into an emergency room and having 10 beds filled with young women that are dead, dying or badly burned. This is an experience that's left me with a great deal of respect and appreciation for the fire department and for proactive planning. The second fire I was involved in was the Veranda Fire. I was there for approximately five hours with the then interim president of the hospital. We were in, in an ambulance checking out a variety of firefighters who came in exhausted, dehydrated and having difficulty breathing. As a matter of fact, if we had more firefighters, I would have sent some of them right to the hospital if they would have gone. Subsequently, several of them ended up in the emergency room. One of them had a heart attack. Now, it's been questioned whether this was really a heart attack. Well, I took care of the guy and it was. And remember, if it had been a windy day, the Veranda Fire would have turned into a repeat of 1846 when the town burned down. This is a wooden town. We need to be very careful about using our firefighters to fix problems we create by overlooking the concerns presented by the previous chiefs and firefighters and relying on state codes that assume you have mutual aid and access to hundreds of firefighters in minutes to a few hours. Now, these state codes are not written from the perspective of an isolated island. Okay, there are sprinklers in the building, but what if a car catches fire outside the building? Or the building catches on from the outside? The firefighters are a select group of highly trained individuals and even with a great deal of new hires, there really aren't a whole lot of them. A fire in. A fire in, in this project of this scope would initiate several hundred firefighters and several different departments in minutes. Mutual aid, in terms of equipment and people, is several hours away. I can remember waiting and waiting and waiting for the people to come from the Cape, and it takes, it's an awful long time when you're sitting there, watching these guys fighting a fire. Yeah, also, we can't ignore the fact that this project is being proposed in a wellhead protection district. Now, the whole point of having a wellhead protection district is to hold these projects to a higher standard to protect our drinking water and community health. Now, we've heard from three different speakers previously, that chemicals are going to run off from this project, and they're not going to be filtered by the proposed stormwater system. It's going to head straight into our drinking water, and near the wells of the people around the building. It's hard to support this project if they don't, are not going to make adjustments to protect the community's health. Smart planning is essential. We have to be very, very careful. We don't put ourselves in a situation that could have been prevented. Nobody said that success is many fathers, but failure is an orphan. I don't want this to be an orphan because of our mistakes. We can't afford to make a mistake with this project. We need better access, we need to listen to our firefighters who fight these fires, we need to listen to the experience of previous chiefs. Do we have to make sure that our water infrastructure isn't contaminated? Have to make sure that we have enough water. We saw what happened in California when we didn't have enough water. This is a real problem. When the island has 50,000, 60,000 people on it in July, we have a big demand on our water system. If there's a big fire, people aren't going to be either able to flush their toilets or put out the fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lepary. Attorney Durensis, do you want to proceed with your presentation now? Attorney Durensis, you should be able to speak right now.
Could I defer the rest of my presentation until later in the meeting?
Of course.
I want to be able to respond to things that are, I anticipate are going to be said.
Okay.
It's better than-
Okay. So, Megan, your hand is back up?
That's correct. I was just going to follow up on things I submitted to the packet.
Okay.
Do you want me to go?
Yep, please.
Oh, sure. So in the packet, there's a letter from the current fire chief, even though this board chose to deliver and vote and request that the state fire marshal's office, fire services, review this project, which they do at no cost to anyone on developments all the time. They have two fire prevention engineers on staff that only review developments. He felt as though this was not necessary because the developers engineer has already said that this is fine. The developers engineer, I will remind you, is paid to say that this is fine, because it is his job to see this project through. Not sure why the current fire chief wouldn't want a independent third-party review of this at no cost to the town, when he is going to be sending firefighters and first responders in to put out fires and save lives. So I think that this board should request that it go up to the state to be reviewed, again, at no cost, and by a third-party reviewer. Also, when, when reviewing certain codes that are required for 40B, yes, there are, let's say, code number 12 has to be part of the process, but what code 12 presumes is that we also meet code 1 through 10, which on Nantucket, we generally don't. So now, we're picking and choosing what state codes we are going to abide by to make sure that this project goes through, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration. If we're going to start abiding by one code, we should abide by all, and if we have to do that, I think we're going to have to look at what our capabilities are for what we have for resources on Nantucket and our finite resources. So that was just in kind of reply to his letter. I had sent a letter, and I'm not sure why it didn't make the packet, replying to him, requesting that he do as the board asked. I also wanted to point out that if, if this board has any doubt or any unanswered questions, it's, the, the simple fix is just deny the project. The developer doesn't want to work with you and give you an extension, they don't want to let you have it reviewed, they don't want questions answered, then just deny it. Like, that's easy. Just because you've always done something the wrong way, I, I believe it was Mr. Bracken that said that we've always done it this way, so we're going to keep doing it this way, that doesn't make it the right way, especially if we've learned that it is the wrong way. You probably shouldn't keep doing it. I think the law all- To prove that the regional need for housing outweighs the welfare of the community. But if we don't have safe water, if we don't have abilities to put out a fire, we don't have infrastructure, housing doesn't matter. So the health, safety, and welfare of our community should come first and foremost. Would you want to put your kids or your parents in a development that you knew was risky and unsafe? Because that's what we're doing, and then I, I, I don't envy this board at all to have this decision on your shoulders when something goes wrong, because we all know, when something goes wrong, people turn and start pointing fingers as to whose fault it is, and I would not want to be the one that approves this project. We don't need to put profit over risk. So that's just kind of my, my follow-up to things that were in the packet. I included a couple of letters. I'm hoping that this board reads the packet fully, and letters that are submitted by the public, so I won't go into those, but again, if you have questions, just deny it, and remember that it is the job of the paid consultants by the developer to see this project through. So they're going to try to say all the lovely, sweet things about this project that they can, and leave out some of the things that might indicate there's a risk, and you should deny it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anyone else with their hand up at this point?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Megan, was Tim, was, Dr. Lepary, was that your witness that you were having speak?
Yes, Dr. Lepary was, and as I'm sure you can imagine, he has a busy schedule, so-
Yeah, yeah, no, okay, I just wanted to make sure before we move on.
I really appreciate you saying that, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Is there anyone else who has their hand up online?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then, why don't we start with the people in the audience? Attorney Murphy, you want to start off?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just want to introduce Sean Reardon, who you heard from before in an early hearing. We brought him back today as the land and water council's engineer. There are a lot of things about the project that you've heard where there's conflicting information. Here's one where I think we can actually solve the problem and get to a definitive answer on the compliance with the stormwater system. And if I could ask Billy, he brought a, a visual aid that may help the board understand his position about standards 5 and 6. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, Sean Reardon, I'm here on behalf of the Nantucket Land and Water Council. Really, what I came today is, in a hope to sort of recognize that there's a lot of conflicting opinions out there about what can be a pretty confusing subject matter even for me. So what I really wanted to do is kind of simplify it as much as possible. The Massachusetts stormwater standards are 10 standards, intended to address everything related to stormwater that needs to be addressed. Standard 5 and 6 exist for very simple reasons. Standard 5 exists to recognize that there are certain facilities that generate more pollutant than others, and logically need to be treated differently. Standard 6 says that there are certain facilities that are in places that are more sensitive, so logically, they need a little bit extra to make sure that those situations are protected. The stormwater standards are explicit. There's a, there's a couple of sentences within each standard that specifically say that in these situations, when these situations exist, you are required to use a suitable treatment for those areas. And they go, go on to define what those suitable treatments are. There's a table that corresponds to this section that lists out what those suitable treatments are. The project does not use any of those measures as part of their process. So what we have is we have a system that essentially eliminates a major component of standard 5 and standard 6, both of which are intended to address pollutant and groundwater. I mean, and what, what's been said is that, well, we, we comply with other standards, we remove TSS, or we infiltrate groundwater. Those are different requirements, yes, they are also requirements, but they're different. This is very specific. It says, if you can't eliminate pollutant, then you must employ measures that are suitable to treat that type of a use. And then if you go down below, there's just a quick little passage, I, I have to read from mine, because I can't read that. Says, "For the purpose of standard 5, stormwater discharges from land uses with the higher potential pollutant loads," which I think we've established, most of the consultants agree, that this is a land use with a higher potential pollutant load, "require," right? Require is not, shall consider, it's require treatment by the specific structural BMPs determined to be suitable for treating runoff from such land uses. These BMPs are listed in Table Lappel. So if you go to the next page. Keep going down. There's a, there's a series of categories, pre-treatment, treatment, and infiltration. Pre-treatment, they meet. They're using, they're doing their pre-treatment using the methods prescribed. They're using deep-sumped catch basins, they use an oil grit separators. Infiltration, they meet that standard, that, that requirement, they're using subsurface, subsurface infiltration systems. There's none of these systems within treatment that are required to be used in these types of uses, being used on the site currently. The only things that are being used are the things allowed under pre-treatment and infiltration. So logic would dictate that, okay, we have a, we have 10 standards, five of which are dedicated to reducing pollutant from either high-polluting facilities or sensitive facilities. You know, it, it defies logic to have nothing additional required for that whole standard. So effectively, their system is no different than it would be if it were outside of a Zone 2, or if it was on a land use with a higher potential pollutant load. It, it's absolutely counterintuitive and illogical to expect that the standards create these two categories, which are absolutely logical and why they're important, but yet assign no additional burden to them. If, if they were doing this project outside the Zone 2, the stormwater system would be the exact same almost. If they were doing this project, and it wasn't for a Lappel, stormwater management system would be identical. In this case, in either case, they would have to do some additional level of treatment, whether it was a Lappel or, or in a Zone 2. In this case, they're in both. So, you know, not only would they have to do it if it were in either of these, in this case, it's in both. So it's a higher potential pollutant facility, and it's in a more sensitive area. To suggest that there's nothing additional required, or you can just do it the same way you've always done, is just, to me, is illogical. And I, I don't think it's a, you know, it's not an overly technical discussion, there are two sentences within this standard, and two sentences within standard 6 that say, okay, if you have this, or if you're in this type of location, you need to, you need to choose something that's suitable for these types of locations and uses. They tell you what's suitable. And all of these are like usually just some vegetated filter, an organic filter, things that are intended to reduce pollutants that are other, things other than TSS and oils and gas. So from my perspective, I, I respect the opinions of everybody else, I, I, I certainly believe they're well-intentioned and well-thought, but, but I do think they are wrong. I think that this unquestionably doesn't comply with the standards, and it doesn't comply with it in very significant ways, in that it doesn't provide adequate protection for a higher pollutant facility, polluting facility, and for a facility located within a sensitive area.
Susan, may I ask, Billy, would you be able to email that paperwork?
Yeah, I just received it at the start of the meeting, so I'll, I'll email it to all, and I can, I can get it up on the website as well.
Yeah, I just want to make some notes on it, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Mr. Reardon, quick question for you, we're not stormwater experts. The BMPs and the standards, do they differentiate between commercial uses and residential uses?
Not under standard 5 and standard 6, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just, I have a question, another question for Mr. Reardon.
Sure.
No, I forgot. So part of the argument is that we can't, for a 40B, we can't require something different than what the town requires for this. And I'm wondering if you could just address that argument, that we're, we're going, we're creating this, these higher requirements because of the 40B.
I think there, there's a clear distinction here. You're, you're not creating the standards or the Stormwater Handbook, those exist. Whether they've been misinterpreted in the past, I don't think is a change in policy or a change in directive, it's just been a misinterpretation or misapplication in the past, that in my mind, should be remedied. And, and I'll be honest, it's understandable why it's been missed in the past. I mean, the only reason this is, this is an issue is because of the prevalence of underground detention. Now, over the last decade, it's become much more affordable, it's become much more commonplace. I'd say 15 years ago, you, you didn't see it nearly as much. I still, as an engineer, don't use it because of all the problems I associate with it. It's, it's out of sight, out of mind, it, it generally don't get to see things happen as they occur. It, it deviates substantially from a natural equivalent. So for example, I, I almost exclusively use above-ground detention basins, because they look, function like wetlands, and wetlands are the best methods for stormwater control and pollution control. So, so to your question, I, I don't think any project is identical to another project, so literally, I could do a project that looks very similar to this project and design it totally differently. So to draw an equivalence to other projects is very difficult, that you, each, each project has its own solutions and its own challenges, so I, I couldn't say that, well, you ever did anything explicitly in the past exactly like you would have done here, so I don't think that's a reasonable standard to put forward.
And also, does the size of the project matter? I think you, you made that point, but if, if they were locating a six-unit project there, would they still need to comply with this runoff? It's much, would be much less, but-
Very good point, and also speaks to your question a little bit. Within the stormwater management, with Stormwater Handbook, there's an exemption for single-family homes. So if you're a single-family home, stormwater standards don't apply. If you're a subdivision of four lots or less, stormwater standards don't apply. If you're outside those categories, then, then they do, but there is a sort of a residential exemption, but not by virtue of it being residential, but by virtue of it being a specific type of residential use. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I got off track there a little bit.
Yeah, I think so, and, you know, they've cited a lot of projects that they've put this infiltration system in. Do, are any of them comparable, without me having to go look at all these sites? I, I mean, I think this is the biggest project on Nantucket, size-wise.
It could be, and I would say it's also too, this is, this is a raw land project, I wouldn't imagine, I imagine there's a lot of redevelopment projects that, you know, something gets redone, so there's some development on site. I think what's important to recognize in this situation is, is you're taking a, what was, what was vegetated land. So there's, there's pollution and rain. When it comes down, there's PFAS and rain, right? You know, under the initial condition, you had 30-some-odd acres of, of natural vegetation that would uptake some of that PFAS, right? Now, it's just that, that rain's hitting the ground, going across the surface of what we've recognized as a higher polluting surface, and then is being introduced into the groundwater, below the groundwater table, out of sight, out of mind, without any level of the treatment that's required. So it, it's just, it's a bit counterintuitive to sort of what the standards are intended to be and how they're intended to be implemented. So it, it's, it's difficult to draw any other similarities to other projects that, if it's, if it's that big- that big, of course, it's going to have more, more impact, right?
Yeah, so without, you know, like John said, we're not, we're not water experts. You know, their argument has some validity, you know, kind of you're picking on us argument, like you're making us do something. So I, I'm just trying to understand it better.
Well, I would say 40Bs are somewhat different, right? Because they allow density beyond what's typically allowed. So it stresses, it stresses the envelope more than any other projects do. Usually when you have a zoning compliant project, there are certain belts and suspenders, whether it be setbacks or whether it be other open space requirements that sort of build in a level of flexibility. When you all of a sudden sort of eliminate those guardrails, then all of a sudden you've increased your level of impact at the same time as you've taken away some of your flexibility and some of your, your design fluff, for lack of a better word. And that's the challenge. I review dozens of these projects and I, I designed dozens of these projects. The challenge always is, is because you've got this increased density, you lose any sort of ability to, to address problems in the future. The die is cast. You can't, you're not going to be taking down homes once they're built. You can't eliminate parking once it's built. If you've left no other space to do things or to solve problems, then you're left with what you have.
Okay. And my final question, Madam Chair. We talked some about the adjoining properties. We hear a lot about the adjoining properties and their, their wells. I just, again, want to get your take on it. I think there's this 300-foot range thing that the, our health department applies, I think our regulations or maybe even state regulations. And I think they're meeting that, but I just want to get your take on that in terms of, I think they're downgrade it. They don't have the option of going to public water. They're going to have to rely on their own wells. And how does this all factor in?
As an engineer, that's.
And could it be mitigated, I guess?
Yeah, as an engineer, that's, that's why standards are perfect, right? Because standards take those questions out and they say, if you do this, then it can be assumed that everything works. That's why I'm very adamant about, well, if you're saying you're meeting the standard, then that comes with a whole lot of sort of grace and understanding that if, if you in fact are not meeting that standard, then it's a fundamentally different discussion. So as it relates to water, I don't want to be hyperbolic and say that people are going to have their wells contaminated and things like that, but, but the standards exist for a reason. You know, the 15% exists for a reason. That didn't just come out of whole cloth. It exists because, yeah, with increased density, with increased pollutant load, there's increased risk. If you're downgrade it from a site as opposed to upgrade it, certainly more risk there. If you were upgrading, I would say there's probably negligible or none, but downgrade it, you know, anything that gets in the groundwater table is going to end up at your well. Frequently, it ends up being a discussion of concentrations, right? There's, there's pollutant in everything. The question is how much? And, you know, we're learning recently that, you know, what we thought was a negligible amount of PFAS before is now, no, it's, it's a significant amount. So, you know, every day we're learning more and more and more. And the bottom line is, you know, the more development we have, the more we're introducing these pollutants into the ground, the more likely they're going to become an issue. So that's why if we at least can go back to complying with the standards, then we have some sort of benchmark that we're holding to justify what we did was, was responsible at the time. That's why I'm so adamant about, you know, holding the line on, on compliance. I firmly believe that this project requires some level of vegetative filtration in line with the expectations of Standard 5 and Standard 6 that's not being provided at all. And it worries me that you're, you're taking water and introducing it out of sight, out of mind, closer to the groundwater table than it would be otherwise. It's now five feet below the surface instead of through grass and through woods. So there's a lot of things here that, that caused me intuitive anxiety, right? But I'm not going to go so far as to say, well, it's going to pollute the groundwater table or it's going to end up becoming this problem for someone else. But the bottom line is, to me, it's like you have to demonstrate that it's not going to. I'm not going to say it's going to, but I say you haven't, you haven't done your job in demonstrating that it's not because.
And I think, I think what I'm referring to are the, the catch basins or the dry wells. And I think that's been resolved, the 300 feet. So you're saying if this was complied with, and I know it protects our, our entire water supply, but especially the adjoining neighbors, like you said, you can't guarantee it, but if they, that's the presumption is that adjoining property owners would be protected.
Yeah, so if, if, if what I'm saying is, is true, that they require some level of vegetated filter or detention basin, then what would happen instead is that the first one inch of rainfall that comes down on the ground, that's usually where most of your pollutant is, right? So all the cruddy stuff that sits on the asphalt gets washed off in the first, in this case, inch of rainfall.
Yeah.
That's your treatment volume. That's what you're required to treat. You're not trying, like, when it rains and pours, you don't have to treat all that water. You just need to treat that first inch because that first inch is what's washing off all the bad stuff. That gets washed through into a detention pond that has grass, it has fragmites, it has other vegetation, it has water that sits there for a long time. It's exposed to the air. So a lot of the bad things that are in the pollutant can either get bound up in those things, either taken up by the vegetation. So for example, one of the only ways to get rid of nitrogen is you have to, you have to put it into something like, it goes into grass, it grows grass. So if you, if you have that, all those pollutants get taken up by the vegetation, get held in the soils as opposed to being introduced where there is no vegetation. All it is, is sandy soil that this stuff just goes right through into the groundwater table. Again, I don't want to make it sound like they're introducing contamination in any substantial way, but, but it is, is far in excess of what the regulations contemplate, which is 50% impervious coverage.
No, that's helpful. In the last meeting, we asked about putting in these detention ponds, and I know you, Don could probably address this, but can detention ponds be, or whatever, be put in without changing anything, without changing the design or the number of units and all? Or, or would that be a sacrifice of some buildings?
Well, I mean, the detention ponds take space.
Yeah.
And the engineer has done a really good job laying out this site so that every usable foot is used. So those would have to displace the things. So you need a footprint for the ponds. I don't know how big the ponds would be and how often they'd have to be because of the shape of the site. But the things that they have in their program already, the underground detention vessels, those are storage vessels for the water to infiltrate into the ground. They still have to do that. So if they did detention ponds to treat the first one inch, they'd still need the infiltration systems to get the water into the groundwater table. So there's, there's three basic legs of this stool. One is pretreatment. That's the amount of treatment you need to do to make sure things function properly. You don't want a bunch of sand and grit going into your, your, your subsurface systems because then it takes up volume, it keeps it from operating. They've met that standard clearly. They've, they've, they've met that. Then there's the recharge requirement, which is, we talked about that a little bit. You want to make sure that you're not robbing water from the water that supplies your aquifer. They're doing that. That's, those big vessels that are underneath the ground store the water that runs off the surface and allows it to infiltrate into the ground so that it's not lost to the groundwater table. The big part that they're missing is the third leg of the stool, which is, okay, in between that pretreatment and the discharge, you got to do something to remove pollutant so that you're protecting the groundwater table because you're in a Zone 2 or because you have a higher potential pollutant loading facility. So you got to remove some of it before it goes out. That's just the one step they haven't done. And in most cases where you don't have these requirements, it becomes just a TSS removal discussion. So you only need to make sure that you're not washing sand and silt downstream or washing sand and silt into the drainage system. Their design does that perfectly, right? Because if everything infiltrates, then everything is held back, all that sand and grit is held back within the infiltration system. So they meet that, that part of the standard. It's that, it's the sort of soluble pollutants and things like that, that they're not doing anything to treat.
Okay. Thank you. That was helpful.
So, and this is, I know this is a basic question, but so the soluble pollutants that they're doing nothing to treat go back into the water supply?
They go back into the groundwater table.
Back into the groundwater table, sorry.
At a location that has the potential to get into the groundwater supply. Again, I don't want to be hyperbolic and suggest that, you know, people are going to get sick or anything like that.
No, no, no. And I'm not suggesting either, but, but there are, but there are treatment protocols for the soluble pollutants. They're just not present here.
Correct, correct.
But they are required for title, for Standard 5 and 6.
Five and six, either or. And in this case, it just happens to be both.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought you were saying. I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Bracken?
Thank you, Don Bracken, engineer for the project. I'm not here to argue or go tit-for-tat at all, but I just want to reiterate, you know, we, we have written responses. We're on the record that we comply with the Stormwater Management Act. Mr. Chessia has also agreed with that. Weston and Sampson has also agreed with that. The treatment tables that Mr. Riordan showed you, the only, the only difference I would say in how that's been interpreted and a lot of other people interpret it, and I work in a lot of other towns besides Nantucket, and it changes from town to town. Some towns do have a requirement that you have vegetated infiltration systems and so forth, but Nantucket doesn't. And all those examples that we gave and I described several meetings ago, Nantucket is a lot different because of the limited space. These other treatments obviously take up space. Mr. Chessia also alluded to that a few meetings ago. But in that table that was shown, it showed pretreatment, treatment, and then infiltration. And as we stated in our responses before is that in this particular design and every other design that I've seen on Nantucket pretty much, you use two pretreatments and then you go into the infiltration. And the regulations require that you have the 44% TSS removal. And that's how you get it, is using the two pretreatments before the infiltration. And the infiltration is accounted for 80%. Now, it's always been the standard and the assumption that, you know, when you meet these standards, then, then you comply with, with the regulations. And again, not only in this town, but in many other towns that we've worked in. So again, it's obvious that, you know, if we had space for wetland basins and those sort of things, they are designed in certain situations. A lot of times those are designed where you don't have soils that have high infiltration capacities like we have. And also, obviously, space is, is a big component. You know, we, we still disagree that, you know, it's not higher pollutant load threshold, but we, you know, we will acquiesce to that because even as Mr. Riordan said, Mr. Chessia at the last meeting said that it should be considered that and so did Weston and Sampson. But they both also said that if it is considered higher pollutant load design criteria, that we meet that as well with the way that the system is set up, with the oil grit separators and having divertiment holes and perform calculations to demonstrate that it treats the first one inch runoff, which is the requirement under both those standards, 5 and 6. I'm sure we're not going to end this meeting, you know, agreeing. I think this is probably going to be up, up to the board how they want to handle it from there. But the only other thing I did want to add about the well-influenced zones, those 300-foot zones in the, in the Port Health regulations apply to septic systems within those 300 feet. And if you recall, we did prepare a well exhibit plan showing the relocation of a few of the drainage areas so that they're at least 100 feet from the newly installed wells. And again, if you recall, those wells were installed after the project was completely designed, right? As close as they could be to our property lines, when there could have been other alternatives for it that they could have chosen at that point. But irregardless, you know, it can be addressed, you know, to be outside the, what's required, the 100-foot setback from those wells.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
So if you were not, if it wasn't a Lubble or within Zone 2, what, would you design an even more rudimentary drainage system or would, would you put this type of system in?
Yeah, maybe we wouldn't use what I call the divertiment hole to make sure that only the first inch that's concentrated gets focused into the oil grit separator. And anything beyond that would be diverted directly to the infiltration system. So yeah, if it wasn't in a Zone 2 and weren't subject to those requirements, we would probably just go directly into the oil grit separator and then into the infiltration system.
Okay, which is why you think you put in the extra.
Yeah.
To me, does that.
Yeah, we feel we technically comply with that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Susan, can I ask a question about the maintenance? Because I think Mr. Riordan said that the non-mechanical solution is better because of the maintenance of underground systems. So where do we stand on that? Because the town now, I think the sewer department has taken over stormwater management, but they haven't really, don't have really protocols in effect to manage this. This would be the first.
Yes, so.
And I think we requested some information, Billy.
Were you, were you on Zoom last time?
Yes, I think, no, I can't remember.
Well, so I brought this up, right? As when we were talking about what open items we might still have. And I was under the impression that we were still kind of figuring out what was going on with the sewer department and their stormwater management system department, but there's no.
I don't think it's fully been set up yet. There's been talk of, there's no set regulations for the sewer department to undertake this for the town. There's been discussions, but there's, there's essentially no jurisdiction currently for the sewer department to review those plans because there's no regulations.
So for stormwater, for the O and M or M and O plans, they're, at this point, for a development of any size, like where they're required? Do they file them with someone and then who, does anyone oversee them for inspections and things?
At this point in time, operation and management plans would be under the jurisdiction of the planning board because they are the ones who review major commercial developments, things of that nature. And they have the town peer review engineer, Ed Pesci. So that's how that's currently done. I mean, this is a 40B, so it's, it's unfortunately not the same scenario. And we do not have, well, the sewer department does not have the authority or, I'm not sure where they are with this. I think, I think it was a little jump in the gun with that.
Which is fine. It brings up, I mean, it brings up the point, though, going forward. And Lisa, I'm glad you brought this up because how, how do, are we managing this and checking, are they going to come report to us twice a year that they have done inspections?
That is a good question, something I can look into. I know the stormwater drainage that was installed previously was inspected by Ed Pesci. And I believe Mr. Chessia, I, I know he had reached out to Mr. Pesci and I can do the same to see if there's any, you know, reports related to the, to the drainage there, if there's anything. I just, those permits have been vacated. I'm not, you know, it's, I'm not sure where any of that stands as far as with the permit vacated, there's no, you know, there's no review taking place currently.
Mr. Riordan, could I ask you a question about the maintenance of these? What would your, if you were to design a system that used underground systems versus, you know, wetlands and vegetation, what would the maintenance plan look like? Like what would we be served to say like, well, this is how something like this should be maintained?
Yeah, there are prescriptions within the standards for what maintenance is required and how often it's done. So, and I would imagine that there's a, an O and M plan submitted as part of the materials that outlines all those things. The question is, is, you know, we're human and I would suggest that a lot of that doesn't get done or done properly. So it's really a matter of intentions versus application and considering the relative risks of, well, what happens if it doesn't go as planned? The net result here is, is that nobody will be able to tell the difference, right? It'll, it'll look exactly the same if it's well-maintained versus if it's not maintained at all. Whereas if you have above-ground things that are horribly maintained. Whereas if you have above-ground things that are horribly maintained, it's obvious that the things are overflowing or that the grass isn't growing. So in this case, there's just no way to tell the difference.
But what is the, I mean, because I don't know anything about these, what does the maintenance look like? Somebody comes in and cleans out filter systems?
Yeah.
That's basically...
I'm sure Donald's...
Yeah, whoever wants to answer the question, because I don't...
First of all, you know, there is a complete operation and maintenance plan that Mr. Chessia has already reviewed. So I think we're all set as far as that goes. And as Mr. Riden said, the question is what happens down the road and make sure that this is happening. I mean, the owner of the property signs a document that they will maintain and provide the operation and maintenance as described in their permit, which this will be part of their permit. So as far as policing it, I think that's when the sewer department would come in. I don't think the sewer department would, I'm assuming, and they're not going to have written operation and maintenance programs that have to be followed. They're going to get, you know, get the approved ones, and they're just going to be the police to make sure that it's being taken care of.
Well, just explain to me, though, what they would see that would show that it wasn't being maintained?
Well, I think it's, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I think it has to be inspected like on a quarterly basis. So, and the catch basins might have to be cleaned once or twice a year. But when they inspect it, they can see if there's any oil sheens or any materials in there that have to be removed or replaced.
Just a visual inspection?
Visual inspection, the same with the large tanks, oil grid tanks. There's the same thing, visually inspected to see if there's any sheens in there. The water could be tested, you know, somebody could run a test to see if there's anything in there, petroleum or anything that needs to be removed. And then the infiltration systems, each infiltration system has at least four inspection ports to grade the cast iron covers that you lift, and you can, you know, look in there with a flashlight, you know, see if there's any fluids in there or any, you know, anything, any buildup, you know, that's going in the system.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Alisa?
To follow up to what Lisa's talking about, and you mentioned it briefly a second ago, are there any water quality, drinking water quality tests done once this is a finished project?
Not that I'm aware of, and it's not part of the operation and maintenance.
No, so how are we supposed to know if the water is over the contamination level that it's sounding like it's going to be? Number one, how do we figure it out? Is it, whose responsibility is it to know if the water is contaminated and to what degree? And then if it is, what are you going to do about it? Does everybody have to move out while you get the water back up to drinkable quality? And how do you do that? Like, literally, how do you do that?
I think during the inspections or if somebody sees something or a spill or something, you know, then testing could be done to make that determination at that time.
So there's nothing in place that requires you to produce water tests or any, you know, monthly water quality testing? It would be on whose shoulders to do that testing to make sure the people are drinking and bathing in safe water? Is there's nothing in place to monitor that?
There's nothing proposed, and I haven't actually seen that type of setup on other projects.
So are we just waiting for people to live there to get sick? What, I'm not, it makes no sense.
It's not just the people that are living there because it's...
Well, and the surrounding...
It's serving an aquifer.
Oh, yeah, and the whole aquifer. But this seems insane to me that there is nothing in place to monitor the water quality. There's nothing suggested, or even since there's nothing that's required of you, that the applicant is not proposing something to put everyone's minds at ease and make everyone feel safe about the project that he is proposing to build and profit from. This is, makes no sense to me that how are we going to monitor? We're worried about the water being contaminated. How are we going to find out? And I don't think it's the town's responsibility. I think it's, well, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but it doesn't, it's like, nobody's taking responsibility, which that alone trumps everything. And again, do you really want to build as a developer? Do you really want to build something that has water that is not drinkable? And we're going to have to figure out a way to find out if it's drinkable when there's nothing else in place that requires that to be done on a regular basis for the entirety, forever? Am I the only one that it's not making sense to here? What's going on?
No, I agree, I understand.
Okay.
I mean, that's why the non-mechanical solution, to me, is the best way of handling it. And I understand that it takes up more space, but they don't want to do it. And they don't want to make the space to do it.
Right.
Like it's being suggested, there's no space to do it. And they're not even suggesting space to do it. They're not saying, all right, well, we're going to take one building away and try to do a wetland situation. They won't do it, and all the infrastructure is in anyway. So that alone is demonstrating that they are unwilling to do anything or deviate anywhere from what they applied for in the first place. All of these meetings have been worthless because they are not coming across and listening to requests and making any suggestions of how to remedy questions and issues and potential problems, and I promise you, they will be problems.
Madam Chair, respectfully, this type of stormwater management system, as we have submitted evidence to this board in the past, is consistent with stormwater management systems throughout the town of Nantucket. We have not seen evidence of any development that has been required to provide a greater level of stormwater than what we are providing.
We've already heard this.
We understand.
We've already heard all these comments as well, Mr. Mondani.
I think the difference, and I think the issue at hand is that when this was proposed before, again, it was 2018. We first started hearing about PFAS, it was something that was way off in the future. The problem now is that it's right here, it's a clear and present danger to our community. I, you know, the DEP is requiring monthly testing of the wells. We have at least one well that is, town well, that is shut down. So it is a, it's a more pressing, not even more pressing, it's an immediate problem that the town is dealing with. So I understand, I can hear where you're coming from, but I don't know that you guys are hearing where we're coming from, where this is a huge addition to the town. And we're sort of in the middle of a situation where the town is trying to figure out, not only the town, but also the country of what PFAS is acceptable. We thought it was 20, now people are saying 4, before that it was 90, so...
And Madam Chair, my response to that would be, in the time since this was originally before this board, the town has taken zero steps to impose any regulations that are different than what was in place before. If you want to impose a requirement...
Well, that's not true, that's not true, because we have a requirement, I mean, we have a requirement now that lines up with the DEP that on any, it's not for public drinking water, but if you're on a private well and you're selling your house, you have to now do water tests and provide that what the water test results are. And I would imagine that that is going to creep over into other areas. But that's the whole point, is that it's still developing.
There's no standard as it relates to stormwater for a project like this that has changed since this project was before this board back in 2018.
I think one of the interesting things that Mr. Riden brought up, though, is not only is this a large luple project, but it's also removing a lot of greenery that actually, 13 acres of greenery that was there before doing the infiltration system. So it was kind of a double whammy, you know?
A raw development.
You're clear-cutting it, yeah, it's like a, it wasn't a, what would they call it? It was like a brown, what's that called? Like, you know, an area that's already contaminated, you know, it's redevelopment of a...
Called a brownfield.
Thank you.
Definitely, this is not a brownfield situation.
No, it was not at all, it was a greenfield. So, you know, I think that that is a little bit different than a lot of the other projects that you might be referring to, that the town has looked at for redevelopment. The one, of course, in the Stop and Shop, that was already developed, it was already paved. You know, there's a lot of other, this is sort of a unique case, I would say, that needs to be thought about.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify my comments to Mr. Haperty. I was only saying that when you began this meeting, you said, "Try not to repeat." What other people have said in this meeting, that's all I was saying. I'm not, I don't want to appear like I'm biased in some way, but I...
And I wasn't suggesting that.
I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this, that's all I can do.
Unfortunately, I...
I just wanted to point out that I'm responding to comments that have been made over and over. So if it sounds as though I'm repeating myself, it's because the comments are repeating themselves, and I need to address them.
Clear.
And I don't know that any of us are, like, we're not going to get to the bottom of it as like a definitive answer, because there is some interpretation here. And as we, there aren't, there aren't, if the regulations were in place, you'd be required to follow those regulations, right? But the title, the Stormwater Standard 5 and 6 are pretty clear. And I think it'll be, again, it'll be up to the board to take in, once we get into deliberation, all of this information and decide what we do with it. Billy, Chessia is on?
Yeah, can we get his?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, because I just want to, I'd like to hear just confirmation about Mr. Chessia's position on the Stormwater Standard 5 and 6 and the chart and the two pre-treatment with going straight to infiltration versus pre-treatment, treatment and infiltration.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Chessia is on, but I did want to mention Kristin Mello had her hand raised. Kristin, if you still want to comment, please keep your hand raised.
Okay, yeah, and then we can go to, we can go to Kristin.
Okay, yes, I've been here at all these meetings, listening to all the testimony, and I have looked up and I've listened to Mr. Riden's report. Well, I mean, he brings up definitely interesting points, and I'm, you know, I'm willing to listen to other ideas, obviously, because I think this is a big issue. What my opinion or take on this, on the treatment aspects are, there's no question that a filter, a vegetated filter, would provide a better treatment than just infiltrating it through the ground. A lot of these things, though, were developed to, for specific sort of, what are you trying to remove? What is the contaminant? So if you're a luple that's a gas station, you'd have things that are going to remove petro, you know, petroleum products. You want to have something that's going to store, if there's a gas spill, if somebody, you know, drives away with the pump turned on and it spills onto the ground. So you have specific things based on the specific sort of loads of what you're expecting. PFAS, I don't think, was anything considered with their treatment systems. I think that a lot of the treatments that were considered were also like nutrients. For example, if you look at a residential neighborhood like this, there'll be dogs, there'll be pets, there'll be, you know, if they don't pick it up, where's it go? It goes into the catch basin, it goes into the ground. Does that get filtered out? Probably would, the bacteria would get filtered out through the soil, just like a septic system, I believe. That's sort of how they were. So it's one of those types of subjects that's evolving. I haven't seen anything from DEP that has said that if you're in these locations, you need to use this specific thing for this specific application. I think more than likely, you know, the board's got to use its judgment as what's the best you can do with this, and, you know, it'll likely be determined in some other venue. There isn't enough data there. My opinion's been that it, what's required is, and that infiltration is a component of the treatment. And I understand what Mr. Riden says, and I've, I had seen cases where DEP said, yes, you're in a Zone 2, or yes, you're this many traffic, this big of a traffic load, then you need to put in A, B, or C as well. I just haven't seen it yet. So that's why I commented the way I did in my letters. As I've also said, of course, if something is spilled that's not treated by these, it's going to go right into the groundwater. There's definitely a risk here. One of the things that was in my letter relative to monitoring is, in your zoning bylaw, I mean, there is a thing about putting in monitoring wells and things like that so that if there is a spill, you'd catch it before it gets too far. It does take time for contaminants to move through the soil. I mean, that would be a condition I think you could impose, that they're required to put in monitoring wells down gradient of their systems and monitor them for certain, you know, contaminants. I would suggest, though, that that's somebody that a water quality expert may want to come up with what specific contaminants you're looking for, because there's so many potential things that could spill, if you think about it. Somebody bringing in groceries that has, you know, different chemicals that they use for cleaning, that dropped the bag, that spills, it's probably not enough to cause a big problem. But that wouldn't happen in the woods, for sure. So, you know, those are things that, everything's a risk. But I don't know if that answers your question, or if you're looking for something more specific, but that's sort of what I think is my take on it.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions for Mr. Chessia? No, okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chessia. Does Christine Mello have her hand up again?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we hear from Christine?
Thank you so much for your time today. I've been listening and...
Oh, I'm sorry, Kristin, I'm sorry, Kristin, I called you Christine, Kristin.
That's okay, thank you. I've been listening today, and I just wanted to add, by way of public comment, that I've read through the Bristol report and was very excited to learn more about how that aquifer layer was formed. But it doesn't discuss anywhere in it the water quality for the direct abutters. And I'm very grateful that you've been asking the questions you have in the last few minutes, and that there doesn't seem to be any disagreement among the engineers about the risk that you're considering. The stormwater standards that Mass DEP has were not designed to prevent PFAS pollution. And while I respect the comments of the engineer and attorney for the applicant, the difference between what happened a few years ago and what's happening now is your context and your understanding of the risk for the water quality on your island. I'll stay online for your meeting if you have any questions for me. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that these stormwater swales and, you know, the vegetative buffer, those are really useful for pulling out things like metals and trying to trap organics, and some PFAS would be caught. But again, monitoring wells will only tell you what has already happened, and you cannot put the toothpaste back in the tube. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Murphy?
Hi. I wanted to respond just very briefly on this issue, and then I do have kind of a summation that I'd like to make. So just on this issue, I really thought that we would solve the problem. I'm not an engineer, it sounds like there's still a disagreement. What I did hear from the design engineer is that there's two pre-treatments, and in his mind, that's as good as treatment. I think Riden feels differently, and that's why I think it's important that you actually look at the document. I don't read it that way. I know some of you are lawyers and not engineers. I see three different categories of what they call structural BMPs. BMP is best management practice, but it's physically a concrete or a structure that goes in the ground. And I think there are certain ones for a certain purpose. And I think what all the engineers would agree is none of the ones listed next to the term "treatment" are included in the stormwater system that's in the ground and that's designed for the plants. That's why, in Riden's opinion, it doesn't comply. That's why, in Reardon's opinion, it doesn't comply. And the importance of that is not just a sort of, "It doesn't comply." You're being asked, in the exercise of your discretion, to allow from 15% impervious, three and a half times, up to 52%. If it, if it doesn't comply for 15% impervious project- We're not saying the only solution is that you cut it back to 15%. The solution is, you build a better stormwater system. I understand there's stuff in the ground, but you redesign things, you lay it out, you make the space, and you put the treatment that the stormwater standards require. So it is a solvable problem. Like any lawyer, I over-prepare, so I didn't know that today would be not the last hearing. I'm going to hand out copies of my, what I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Rather than read it to you, because you can read probably faster than I can speak. So I wanted to zoom out just a little bit and spend a little time emphasizing the points on this particular issue. Number one, we're on an island, there's only one source of potable water. That's what it means to have a sole-source aquifer. This is it, forever. So it's a critically important issue. Number two is that this board really is the regulatory authority. It's a comprehensive permit. I understand ZBA doesn't normally deal with impervious coverage in a zone two. That's something that's new to the board. I understand that maybe other boards have been more lax in their review of that. Nevertheless, I appreciate that the board has taken this with the seriousness that the Land and Water Council has taken it. You know, we've brought a few experts multiple times. The next point I wanted to make is to explain the law. You've got three overlapping laws. So you have the state drinking water regulations. DEP does not review stormwater systems, except if there is a wetland. There's no wetlands on the site. DEP is not monitoring this. They permit new public water supply wells, and in that context, they enforce their own drinking water regulations. But what those regulations require is that local municipalities enact protections for the 15% limit. And you have that. You have the public wellhead recharge bylaw that has the same metric, the same 15% impervious coverage. The distinction is, it says no degradation. You know, Horsley's interpretation, you heard from him, zero tolerance. And it also requires 95% recharge. So our position from Horsley and Reardon has been, if the system designed doesn't comply with the minimum standard, and I understand that's debated, then how can you give them more than the 15%? They're asking you to make an assumption that, first, that they do comply, and second, because they do, there will be no degradation in groundwater quality. And that's the thing, you know, a monitoring well, that's all well and good, but by the time you have a hit on a monitoring well, the thing is built, people live there, it's very, very hard to retrofit it and make it right. So that, I mentioned there's three overlapping laws. There's the drinking water regulations, there's your local bylaw that incorporates the same 15%, and then there's the stormwater standards, which have the force of law. The discretion that the board is being asked to exercise is to allow greater than 15% impervious coverage. And that arises under these regulations. And, you know, one of, one of the issues that, you know, we submitted information from Horsley, Kristin Mello has independently submitted some information, and Sean Reardon, you've heard from multiple times. I think it would be very hard to point to something that's in the record, all the information that you have, that you could say, "There will be no degradation in groundwater quality." And that is a finding that the board would need to make in order to allow greater than 15% impervious coverage. That's what the law would require. We require this board to make that finding, and I, I went through this record really carefully over the weekend. I don't find anything that you could cite for such a finding. In response to the question about the unfairness element, Mr. Mondani, I think, asked that, you know, they've treated other things differently. First of all, I don't know that that was this board. Second, those are all different projects. I think you've, you've seen Mr. Bracken's Exhibit A. We had a response to that. Many of those are commercial projects. None of them, not one of them, is even half the size. This is six and a half new, brand-new acres of impervious coverage, other than the airport, unprecedented on this island, in a zone two. And part of how I know this is, I've, I've been here for every meeting so far, and I've seen a, you know, shift in position, you all have been here for that. First, Attorney Haverty argued, "Well, this is beyond the scope of the remand. You can't consider it." I think we got past that. Second, they suggested that, actually, the impervious coverage decreased. Well, Cheshire did the calculation. He says it's over 10% increase, right? He came up with a number, the number's in my letter, whether you go by pavement or total impervious coverage, it's more than 10%. Next, they say, "Well, we do comply." And their argument for "we do comply" is that we're removing 44% of the suspended solids. And Reardon agrees, yes, but that is pre-treatment. That is not treatment of the soluble, non-suspended solids in stormwater that the chemist, Ms. Mello has said, Horsley has said, is what's going to degrade the water quality. And the last, I called it a gimmick, I still say it's a gimmick. When you got the waiver list, now they say, "Well, never mind, we never really needed that waiver in the first place." They absolutely need a waiver, because they're asking you for more than 15% impervious coverage. So you're in good company, because you're not, well, the Land and Water Council are not the only ones that have kind of championed this issue. The Board of Health brought it up, if you remember. They had actually recommended in their initial comment letter to get an independent expert. The developer didn't want to pay for that, so we went and got some experts and brought them to you. Natural Resources also has a similar position to ours, in that they think that there should be treatment before infiltration, including from roof runoff, which is another source of contaminants from asphalt roofs. You've heard really heartfelt, and I think persuasive, from several abutters with private wells, they have exactly the same issue, except they're more in ground zero than the public water supply. The last thing that I wanted to bring up is the question of what's changed since the last time? And the chair made this point eloquently. No one had ever heard of PFAS in 2019. Now we know wells are, hundreds of wells on Nantucket have been tested. You have to test your well in order to sell your property. It's become one of the biggest, if not the biggest, environmental threat on the island. The other thing that's changed, which I, I don't want to lose sight of, is the project in front of you now has more, materially more impervious coverage. Look at Cheshire's calculation. 26% more paved surfaces and 11% more impervious coverage. The other sad irony, my term, is that the site's been clear-cut, so the one natural resource that would have mitigated the stormwater, which is organic biomass, that's gone. So now you have the most permeable soils. And understand what a stormwater system does, right? So it actually collects the water and injects it into the groundwater. So it is literally concentrating the pollutant load and not treating it the way the law requires, the way the regulations require. So without having that organic layer, the natural process isn't there. My last point, you have very experienced town council who knows 40B like no other lawyer in the Commonwealth. Take his advice. My own would be this. I sat in your seat, I worked on many 40Bs. If there's something that you can vote for, that you feel in your conscience is the right thing for Nantucket, vote for it. If there isn't, I don't believe this board is free to redesign the project. One thing you may be thinking of is, "Well, why couldn't we just approve it at 15%?" 15% is by right. The problem with that is, you've already tried that. That's essentially what you did in 2019, when you approved 60 units. And you see where that ended up. So I would not envy your position, but I would say, I would be wary of trying to redesign a project, and instead focus on the application and the plans that are in front of you, and vote based on those. I, too, have been frustrated, I do quite a few of these. I usually see more of a give and take. I understand this is a remand. I understand the project has already been partially built, and, you know, there's, it's further down the road. But if you go back, other than the well sheet plan that put the setbacks of the wells, there has not been a single change to these plans from the day they were sent to you. Not one. I know I've said "final" twice already, so let me make this my final, final point. At the HAC, if that's where this ends up, an approval with conditions puts the burden on the applicant to show the project is uneconomic. That has succeeded in 55 years, zero times, not one time. Since your last comprehensive permit, the SJC has actually determined, in the Milton case a few years ago, that it is okay for a developer to propose an uneconomic project. Now, you would think, "Why would they do that?" But that is now lawful. Under 40B, the project can be uneconomic when it was proposed. The consequence of that is, if you add one straw to that camel's back, what happens? It makes it more uneconomic. And so, for that reason, although they bear the initial burden, it's almost worthless, because it's a very, very hard standard to overturn. If they can argue that, "Hey, my project was uneconomic the day I applied, and then you made me spend five cents on something," or whatever it is, that makes it more economic, I win that argument. The other thing you should know is that even if they get past that argument, the town or the board's burden at HAC is exactly the same, whether you approve it or deny it. Exactly. You have to show that local concerns outweigh the housing need. I can tell you, I spent a significant amount of my time in the last five years in order to give you, you, this board, that opportunity, not some bureaucrats in Boston. Because you're in the best position to weigh the balance of what's best for this island, in terms of housing, and resource protection, and water quality. And so I appreciate all that you've done. I think Emily would want to say a few words, if you want to hear from her, but I would be happy to take any questions that the board would have. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, really quickly, I just wanted to let you know that Attorney Paul Duransus has his hand raised as well. Okay, so we can go back to Attorney Duransus after we hear from Emily.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. First of all, I just want to thank the board for the time and attention that you've had for this project over the last several months, and all of these issues that have been raised before you. The Nantucket Land and Water Council has been deeply involved in water protection for decades, and we quite literally added water to our name about a year ago, really to recognize that preserving the environmental integrity and quality of life on Nantucket in the years ahead is really going to require a very strong focus on protecting our waters. As someone who has attended and participated in regulatory meetings on a variety of projects for over 20 years, I feel really strongly that these issues around water quality pose the greatest threat to our long-term health, for the island's environment and community, especially looking at the cumulative impact and implication of our ongoing and future development. And this is really why we've gone to the expense of bringing these two experts to these hearings, as well as our council, out, because these issues really need to be fully vetted and understand, so that, understood, so that you, as a board, can, can make the best-informed decision. I wanted to also just spend a moment speaking about this standard, this impervious surface standard. And I think it has been sort of implied in general, that when this matter was before the ZBA years ago, certainly, most of us didn't really know what PFAS was, or didn't really understand it, or some of the other soluble contaminants that we face these days. We also, as an entity, I think, were very focused and concerned about protecting the rare and endangered species habitat that had been on the site at the time. I do think that there were some stormwater issues and concerns that came up, but certainly not to the same level and extent as they have been today, just because, again, of the times that we're living in. From sort of a larger-scale, island-wide perspective, I now attend all planning board hearings. I think I probably review just about every project and application that goes before the planning board, including those developments and redevelopments within our zone two. And I will say that with all of the other zoning applications and zoning bylaw standards to consider, I have not been in tune with this 15% impervious surface standard. I have not been paying close enough attention to it. We certainly elevated our attention to this project because of its size, its density, the potential impacts of it. And so in hiring these experts, and really beginning to better understand what that standard in our bylaw says, what it means, what it implies, I definitely do not think that, as a town, we have been sufficiently implementing and enforcing it. Over the last several months, I've started having conversations with members of other boards, department heads, and I think that there are a lot of people who agree with me, especially considering what we know now about stormwater and how it can impact our groundwater, and that, as you heard from the project engineer, there are other communities that require these vegetated infiltration- there are other communities that require these vegetated infiltration solutions. There are projects on Nantucket that have used detention ponds or basins or vegetated swales, but it's not something that we regularly see required. And in our zone two, we should be requiring that. And I personally am committed to trying to work with some of the boards and our department heads to really improve those standards and make sure that we are implementing them across the board. But you guys are the permitting authority for this project. And I'm hoping that you will take it upon yourselves, since it is your authority to do so, to properly apply the standard here. As that permitting authority, you certainly do have a difficult task in trying to balance different community priorities. And we, of course, recognize that we need more, better housing options for the community. But we also recognize that we should not be developing it at the expense of our groundwater, which provides the sole portable drinking source for the surrounding community. I think, as you've heard, the developer really has not budged from their position on these issues from the beginning. And that does make it a lot harder, if not impossible, for you as a board to find any middle ground. And again, I think you need to respond and make a decision based on what has been proposed and not try to design something else or something different through a permit. So, whatever your ultimate decision is, again, we really appreciate the time that you've put into this and spent on it. And we will be standing by, ready to assist you again if your decision is not ultimately the end of this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Do you want to bring, do you need to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So, John needs to leave, but he can mull in.
He hasn't missed a meeting yet.
Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, if you can bring over Duransus and we'll let him.
Hi, thank you. I have a presentation I want to make to the board. But before I do so, our witness, Kristin Mello, wants to add something to what she had said. So, I wonder if we could recognize her to supplement what she had previously testified to.
Of course.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add, my understanding was that, I mean, considering the item before you, you needed to know whether or not it was possible to condition something that would protect the groundwater and whether or not you had the town resources to handle the issue if, you know, there were a degradation to groundwater. And the problem is, there just isn't any evidence. And so, I just wanted to bring it up because we can kind of get lost in the, you know, impervious surface and how many, you know, percentage. But really, you are being asked for a special permit, right? For special permission to do something that is not normally allowed. And, you know, you have seen the ways in which groundwater will be degraded and you've seen the ways in which DEP would require it be protected, that it isn't, you know, because of local zoning. But at the end of the day, the discretion is yours. And if it's not possible to condition something that would protect the groundwater quality of the abutters, I just, I don't know how anybody can find it in their hearts to ask you to do so. And so, I, as a personal, I just, I need to bring that back because you're, it's possible that those residences weren't real until after the first one went in. But when did you find out about that PFAS? And while I understand that there was originally, you know, another application, you know, that's not the situation, that's not the state of affairs in Nantucket today. And your responsibility, your authority, is about the state of affairs in Nantucket today and how to protect your community, no matter who's asking you for a special, you know, permit or special permission to make money there. And if this were 100% public housing, this would be a different discussion I were having with you about how to protect that water and have 100% affordable housing. But that's not the discussion we're having. And I just thank you for giving me an opportunity to bring it back to what's real and not hypothetical. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mello. So, we'll move on to Attorney Duransus's presentation.
Attorney Duransus, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great. This hearing has presented you with a series of reasons to deny this project as a public safety hazard, not only to those living on the island, but to any future residents of this particular development. This hearing was supposed to be the opportunity ordered by Superior Court that the residents of the town would have to identify issues of local concern and have the developer address those local concerns with project changes. There have been no project changes by the developer in response to the revelations of urgent needs to upgrade this project. Just consider how many planned revisions have you been given to review that have addressed the concerns expressed by board members, by the public, by the witnesses that have been before you? None. So, let me direct your attention to some of the fatal flaws of this project that we believe are grounds to deny. The first is what we've just been discussing, a failure to comply with stormwater standards. The developer has failed to comply with stormwater standards, thereby creating a threat to the neighbors and to the town's drinking water aquifer for reasons presented by two separate Nantucket Land and Water Council experts and confirmed by a PFAS expert, chemist Kristin Mello. Among the defenses offered by the developer for reasons not to address this has been that others have been allowed to build without full compliance. That argument fails for two separate reasons. Reason one is because the 10 examples of others cited by developer are very different from the Surfside Crossing development. These 10 are the Frito-Lay Distribution Center and other predominantly commercial operations, including a commercial car wash, a fitness center, a storage building, and two housing developments, all of smaller scale. Nothing like the size, density, and quantum of human occupancy of the Surfside Crossing development. Reason two is that the serious threat to the island's drinking water is commonly known now, changing the circumstances involved in evaluation of all development proposals. And now, we know the health issues of cancer and death better today. It's simply irresponsible to accept the argument that we must limit ourselves to the, quote, "old ways" of letting people get sick just because in the past, we let others get harmed. The old ways of doing things have got to be over. As Tipping Point Witness Kristin Mello testified here at the February 3 hearing, quote, "It is not possible to condition the changes required to prevent the chemical contamination that would result from this proposed project." "It is therefore also my opinion that this permit application must be denied in order to protect the public and private drinking water supply." So, that's reason number one. Reason number two is lack of fire safety. We have put in the record of this proceeding that at the Housing Appeals Committee proceedings, the testimony of the then-Nantucket Fire Chief was that the Nantucket Fire Department lacked the means to fight a fire at the site and needed different access for its equipment. Surfside Crossing's hired witness, Sousa, has provided an answer that there's no legal mandate for the access needed by the Nantucket Fire Department. So, quote, "This question was not analyzed." That's paragraph 27 of his sworn testimony. Now, at this hearing, we have introduced additional testimony from Nantucket firefighters to the same effect. To counter that, there is a new letter from Sousa, now unworn, unlike the testimony at Housing Appeals Committee and not subject to cross-examination from us, in which he essentially says that unless there is a legally adopted requirement to provide the kind of access that the Fire Department needs, then this local concern is dismissed. Similarly, there is a letter from the current Nantucket Fire Chief, who declines to have the State Fire Marshal review this project because developers have submitted an engineer's statement that all is well. However, the fact remains that the design is unsafe for a local concern for Nantucket, which is your job to find. Those local concerns are the special circumstances here on this island, out to sea, whether or not it meets the state fire code. Those who are responsible for our safety say they cannot maintain the safety of the public with this project as designed. This is a valid local concern and is the basis for an outright denial. Third reason for denial, lack of second entrance. The proposed reinforced turf emergency access roadway in the subdivision from South Shore Road in Surfside Crossing's witnesses' sworn testimony, Sousa's words in his sworn testimony, says, "Because this roadway has a width of 15 feet, whereas the code minimum requirement is 20 feet, this was not considered a fire department access road in calculating building access." That's paragraph 22 of his sworn testimony. In simpler words, the evidence presented by Surfside Crossing, by witnesses under oath, is that the emergency access road is too narrow, doesn't meet code, and is to be disregarded. So, we are left with a development with only one full access. The police chief and the fire chief want the secondary access for public safety reasons, but not just for fire access. I mean, it's good that the police and the fire departments are concerned about their access. But I speak for the residents and the public and having two means of access for their departing from the site in an emergency. They want to be able to get in and out of the site and not be trapped there. The letter from Surfside Crossing again says that since there isn't a law on a piece of paper requiring two means of access, they are not going to make any effort to provide it. The developer's response concedes that to make it a real and safe access, it would have to be bigger and wider, and there's no space to do so. It is your responsibility as the Board of Appeals to identify local concerns and local needs and to require a safe project and not a death trap. The absence of a safe second way of accessing the site for the residents, for the public, for the emergency services is a reason to deny. Number four, lack of adequate water supply to fight fires at the project site. Nantucket Tipping Point has submitted the transcript of remarks of the water superintendent, where he acknowledged that PFAS, that there is a PFAS pollution plume which is approaching the town's well field. So, he is limiting the pumping from some of the town's drinking water wells. That's because pumping and using those wells draws the plume towards those wells. So, that means that while there is technically on paper capacity to handle the volume of water at a fire at the proposed development, he says, "In so doing, such pumping will pull the PFAS contamination plume towards the town wells, leading to possible contamination of the island's sole source aquifer." His remarks included a description of the Veranda House Fire, where the town's well field produced 850,000 gallons of water to combat the fire, but at reduced pressure, according to the firefighters present during the fire. Although the most recent fire chief now says there was no water issue, in fact, the fire chief was not present for the Veranda House Fire and has no personal information. If this was a court of law, we would have moved to object and strike his testimony on this issue because he has no personal knowledge. However, the Surfside Crossing development contains 19 such verandized buildings, which would require 19 times 850,000 gallons if the fire had spread. As the Veranda House Fire was spreading to its neighboring buildings, so could a Veranda-style fire at Surfside Crossing spread to neighboring buildings. If 19 of those buildings were on fire and each required the 850,000 gallons that the Veranda House Fire required, that would force the water company to provide 16 million gallons of water to prevent all the buildings from being engulfed. Pumping like that doesn't exist on Nantucket. But in any event, that would draw PFAS into the town's aquifer, creating a forever problem for all the water users, all of us, island-wide. Well, that solution is to propose to put a treatment plant on the water coming out of one well. But the problem is not the water coming out of one well. The problem is the water moving underground to recharge the water being pumped. That is the water that has the PFAS in it, and that moves into the aquifer untreated. And I want to draw your attention to a quotation from the Bristol Engineering Report that says, "There's a shallow aquifer and there's a deeper aquifer." there's a shallow aquifer and there's a deeper aquifer. And there is a mistaken belief that they are separate. But what Bristol says is the shallow aquifer serves as a source of recharge to the deeper aquifer, from which the rest of the water company's wells draw. So if you allow the PFAS to go into this well, number 15, it is not safely contained there, and having a treatment plant for the water that's coming out of that plant does not prevent the PFAS from infiltrating the deeper aquifer and causing the entire aquifer to become contaminated. And what does that mean for Nantucket? That means that everybody who has a well, that means all the public water supply wells, everything has to be treated islandwide. Is that the future that you want for Nantucket? Isn't the right thing to prevent the PFAS to get into the aquifer at the beginning? So the plan that the water company is planning to do doesn't work. And if this board had more hearings, we would provide witnesses that would establish that, that this is a, you're committing suicide scenario. Reason number five to deny this project: There's going to be 1,000 new vehicle trips from this development onto adjacent roads. We now have a study done by the town of Nantucket that indicates that where this traffic is going is the highest crash and injury locations on Nantucket. And this developer has the gall to remove a safe pedestrian accidents for occupants and their children from the Surfside Crossing development up to Surfside Road. The developer's traffic plan as presented has been discussed in a separate filing that we have made with the Board of Appeals. Direct your attention to it. But this is a disaster. This is going to put children at risk. It's going to increase traffic. Their own traffic expert says that things should be done by the developer to encourage pedestrian and non-vehicle means of transportation, and instead by eliminating a safe pedestrian access, they have gone against the advice of their own experts, who have provided, again, sworn testimony. A sixth reason to deny this project is the drinking water well setback requirements are violated. Developers' plans violate the Board of Health requirements for setbacks. The point of setbacks is to keep the developers' pollution, whether intended or not intended, away from a butter's drinking water. Our witnesses who presented this information to the Board of Appeals, Chris Meredith, Jack Samicki, and Christian Mello, provided maps that included a map of wells in existence in 1992 and the wells in existence now. The Surfside Crossing defense that these are all new wells is false. There are wells in place back in 1992, shown on the plan, that are not protected. Yes, there is one new well that they are arguing about, but one new well doesn't defeat the argument and doesn't excuse non-compliance Because the setback requirements have not been met, because it doesn't meet the Board of Health regulations, because it doesn't meet the recommendations of the Board of Health, Surfside Crossing's argument fails. The failure to comply with the law endangers the butters and creates serious threats of harm to the public health. Developers recently discovered project modification makes misuse of the town sewer line. The town consultant, Chesia, reported in his initial report that he discovered that the developer is intruding onto the town's sewer easement. This is a property interest. The town has ownership of an easement. The issue is not, as Surfside Crossing's response argues, whether there is in existence a local requirement applicable to construction within close proximity to a municipal sewer line. The issue is actually that the developer was caught making private use of a publicly-owned easement with construction that's inconsistent with that easement. It's like, to use an analogy, it's like Surfside Crossing went into your own backyard silently and started putting something underground in your yard, hoping not to be detected. And then when they get detected, they say, "Well, there's no rule that says that we have to be more than 10 feet from your house." The issue isn't whether or not there's a rule about how far they have to be away. The whole point is, it's a property interest. They don't have a right. And Surfside Crossing has never rebutted that issue, and they've had plenty of time. They've been afforded more than ample opportunity to speak on all these issues. Their response has been, "Our enforcing our property rights is, quote, 'unequal treatment' not allowed," is completely false, is there is no other housing project that has had the audacity to go upon and build structures inconsistent with the requirement of a real estate property interest owned by the town. Nor has Surfside Crossing cited a single example. Reason number eight to deny this project is a failure to comply with the Nantucket Historic Districts Act. We have presented the testimony under oath of Diane Coombs, which is already in the record from proceedings before the Housing Appeals Committee, that the project is inconsistent with the Historic District Act and needs to be reconfigured. The Select Board report to this board includes similar HDC comments, and there was a letter from the HDC. "There is no statutory authority to waive the HDC Act as a matter of law, nor has there been any certificate of appropriateness issued at any time, nor could there be, because the designs of the buildings are inconsistent with the Act. Noncompliance with the Act threatens a fundamental aspect of the economic welfare of the island and interferes with the preservation of a national historic landmark." The Nantucket Historic District is created by a state act that recognizes the importance of the Nantucket Historical District as an asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is also an asset of the nation. To allow it to be degraded in this way is not consistent with the Act and is a valid local concern. Again, the purpose of the Board of Appeals and the purpose of this hearing is to identify Item nine: there's still no sewer solution. The testimony so far in the official record is that the town wants one solution for the issue of handling sewage from the project, while the developer has not agreed to the town's position. And maybe one day they'll agree to it, but maybe not. How can a project be granted without that being resolved? For all these reasons, denial of this development is the only reasonable conclusion. The developers have already said that they're going to go to the Housing Appeals Committee if this board seeks any changes to all of its present designs for this development. But all of those designs, they've admitted, and their witnesses have admitted, are minimum standards. They have put together a project based and founded upon minimum compliance with whatever law or regulation that may exist. But your function is not just to look at laws and regulations. Your function is to identify local concerns. And designing to the minimum standard is itself a local concern. Why would you want to create a class of housing for people who are desperate for housing that is only minimal? That only meets minimum standards? Aren't they entitled to decent housing? Isn't everybody on the island entitled equally to have safe housing and not to have these risks that have been identified throughout the hearings? So we call upon the sport to write a decision that explains why local concerns have not been incorporated by the developer into this project. And that should lead to a denial. And I would add that the developer's refusal to make any changes to this project has, in effect, violated the remand order. The purpose of the remand order was to have a hearing, a real hearing, for the identification of local concerns and for the process to follow, like hearings are supposed to do in 40B projects, of working to solve the issues of the local concerns. The developer has stonewalled this from the beginning, has only presented arguments why they why they comply with minimum standards and why they would not make this project into something worthy of Nantucket. For all those reasons, we ask that this project be denied. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Durensis?
Hold on a second. Thank you, Attorney Durensis. I'm going to see if you can hang on. I'm going to see if the board has any questions for you. I see Jim does. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Attorney Durensis, can you just clarify your comments on the sewer connection? I guess I thought that's been resolved.
We understand that there's an issue on a pumping station at the treatment plant.
At the, at the sewer treatment facility?
I believe there's a request pending for a contribution and a denial that they won't contribute.
Thank you.
I thought, Haverty, since you're at the mic, and maybe Don Bracken, maybe you're better to answer this, but I thought we talked about the sewer and when we talked about the generator and that the, whatever needed to be done, the pump-out station was, I thought was represented, that it was pretty much done and that the generator would most likely or not be needed. Has that changed?
So, Madam Chair, I'll let Mr. Bracken address this, but I will say, my understanding is it's a matter of timing as to whether or not the sewer improvements will be online in a, in a manner timely with the commencement of this development. And I'm pretty sure we have committed to tying in to the sewer, the way that the Sewer Commission wants us to, as long as it's ready to go, you know, at the point that we're ready to connect. However, if it's not ready to go when we connect, then we would go with the alternative that we provided during the original hearing process.
And?
Is that correct, Don?
And is that, is that why there might be some issue with the contribution that you're?
Correct. If we are going to connect to the portion of the sewer that has been newly constructed, then we will make the contribution. If we are not going to connect to it, then we're not going to make that contribution.
And then, follow-up on that, I guess, is the generator, is the generator currently located in that sewer easement area?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sorry, the generator that's on the plan, is that in the sewer easement area? No, just the, there's a shed? I just want to be sure, I just want to remember correctly.
The generator, if you recall, is near where the emergency access was because the sewer line was coming down that emergency access road.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I believe there was a shed there to go with it, if there were going to be, if there was going to be a pump station there. So the alternative was tie into the gravity line that's there, and then that'll be activated when the town puts its pump station in at the treatment plant. If the timing was such that we had to tie in before that happens, then we would need a pump station to pump into the sewer line that runs along the street.
But if the timing were such that after, I don't know, I'm going to make up a date, six months, you could tie in gravity?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Then you would do that and pay the fee associated with that. Doesn't mean that, once you tie in, you're paying the fee, whether or not it happens before you're online or a year after?
I think that's a separate question. The connection fee, there's no dispute that we're going to be paying the connection fee. The question is whether or not there is a contribution that's going to be made as it relates to the upgrade to the sewer line. And we don't have, we haven't come to an agreement, the Housing Appeals Committee decision basically stated that it presumes there will be a discussion between the applicant and the sewer department if that option is going to be pursued. So again, we'll have that discussion at the appropriate time if we were going to connect to that portion of the sewer system.
But you'll be required to once it comes online, or no? Is there a requirement for you to connect when it comes online, when it's gravity, or can you still continue to use your pump station?
We would still continue to use, if we construct ours the way that the original plans proposed, we would stay with that. However, it's really going to get down to a question of timing as to whether or not the connection to the- as to whether or not the connection to the town sewer line that was just installed, you know, if that's online, when we move forward, then we'll connect to that and we'll have the appropriate discussion with the Sewer Commission as to, you know, what the appropriate contribution is for that. But that's separate and distinct from the sewer connection fees.
Would it make sense to have that figured out and put into escrow?
Well, I don't know about putting it into escrow. And again, it's really a question of timing that we don't have an answer to as to whether or not, you know, when we'll be at the point where we're going to connect. And we don't have an answer to when the town's going to ready to, be ready to put that online. So right now, it's premature.
And then just procedurally, would that come back to us then? If there was, would it be a change if they're going to not connect?
George, if you heard that question, I would defer to you on that.
Yeah, it's up to the board on how to condition it. Your original permit, you conditioned it in accordance of the sewer superintendent's recommendation, which was the gravity line. So if you get to that point that you're looking at conditions of approval, we'll go back through David's comments and I would recommend you condition the permit in accordance with David's recommendations. This is not a viable solution was being described, in my opinion. You're not going to wait to see the timing and all of that. But it's very clear the sewer superintendent and the town want them to go to the gravity line if there ends up being a project here. That would be what I recommend your conditions focus on. I would certainly be able to help you craft those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. But they're saying, HAC says that this is the way it's got to be.
Well, I would disregard that. I would disregard that. And, and the HAC decision was, in my opinion, you know, I don't want to get into disparaging, you know, the decision, but that also was not a viable solution, really, what was suggested in there because it sort of left it open. That there would be further discussions and they can go forward with their plan and, but it made sense to listen to the town. It didn't really make any sense at all. So you get another chance at it. And, you know, like I say, this is only a relevant discussion if you end up contemplating an approval with conditions.
Oh yeah. No, I've got, I've got, I've got you on there.
While we have George, can I ask him a couple other questions?
Yeah, and then, and then, and then we'll go to Ms. Zemicki.
These should be maybe pretty easy. The first question, you're, you're still involved during, when we're in the cone of silence or whatever it is, after the public hearing. Do we, we could still use your advice and counsel?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yes.
Don't leave us.
Unless and until I'm replaced, I've been authorized by the town manager to represent you in this process. And you, you have the right to have counsel consult with you after the close of a public hearing.
Okay. Second, I know there's some points that have been brought up that says if we deny the project, building, they cannot obtain a building permit. If, if we approve a project with conditions, they can begin continued construction at their own risk while it's being appealed, if it were appealed. Is that correct?
I don't consider that to be the case, the proceeding at risk. In the event of an appeal of your decision, and it's pending, my opinion is you cannot proceed at risk. The proceed at risk issue came up when there was only a Superior Court appeal pending after the decision from the HAC. And that was the, you know, when that case involved, you know, interested parties or butters or the land council, anything like that. But in, in the event of a decision by you and an appeal to HAC of that decision, they cannot proceed at risk.
Okay. So we don't need to factor that in. And finally, I just, I want to get your take on the fire chief's letter to us, the most recent. I think it's irresponsible. I'm not really sure why you would not follow our recommendation or direction, meaning the chief. And, and, you know, for instance, and he's changed his view on, on the access piece. He doesn't want another access, which is crazy. When a fire chief doesn't want another access. So that tells me something right there. And the fact that there's this options agreement that's been in play, I'm concerned there's a conflict. So I just want you to address that.
Well, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
And can we, as the 40B body, make that request on, on the chief's behalf? Which I think we should. I mean, we could.
Right. I don't think you have the ability to overrule the chief and go to the state. Would the state, you know, act on a request directly from the board? Frankly, frankly, I don't know that. I should note though, a couple of things. First of all, you know, your fire chief is your authority having jurisdiction. And that's a, that's a legal term. And, you know, he has given an opinion, and I'm not involved in this opinion. In other words, department heads have commented to you. They participated in your process. I'm, I'm not involved in opining to the fire chief about issues within his jurisdiction. Unless and until he requests a legal opinion on something that gets authorized by the town manager, I have not weighed in to the fire chief in any way, shape or form, you know, as to his opinions on jurisdictional issues as the authority having jurisdiction. So I just want to be clear about that. I do not have, it, it's not a legal issue and it's not a subject for legal opinion from me to say whether or not the, the chief is, you know, whether or not the chief should or should not seek further consultation with the state. That, that is not for me to say. It's for the chief to opine on. He gave a determination on that. And then it's for the board to decide, you know, what weight to give the fire chief's opinion on issues before you. One thing that's important to note, I, I saw again about this option agreement and I just want to be clear and I, I'm fully cognizant of the fact that when the select board by a three to two vote instructed town council to dismiss the lawsuit that the ZBA had pending along with the, with the land council at the time, you know, that did not go down well. It, the board, you know, the ZBA really should have had the opportunity to at least, they didn't have the right to overturn the select board's decision, but they should have had the opportunity to at least have a meeting, you know, before that decision was made and we went forward with that instruction. So I think everybody recognizes that that was not a good situation and it shouldn't have been done that way. And, and as you'll recall, you know, I filed that lawsuit. I believed in the lawsuit and, and it, it, it shouldn't have gone down that way. You should have had the chance to weigh in to the select board before that happened. Now, having said that though, I want to be very clear because I've seen this issue of an option agreement mentioned in, in a writing, you know, referring to town council, referring to me, I think. And also now the option agreement coming up as a potential conflict for the fire chief. I want to emphasize a couple of things. There is no option agreement in effect between the select board or any town board or committee and the developer in this case. And, and no communications about that are ongoing. No meetings, I'm not having conversations with anybody about that. So there isn't an issue about that. In terms of the fire chief's potential involvement in an option agreement, it doesn't exist. He had nothing to do with, if there ever was any type of draft option agreement being contemplated. If town council at some point, in other words, somebody from our office, town council doesn't just consist of me, we have Vicky Marsh as a real estate attorney and John Giorgio, many other attorneys work on it. If at some point in time, over the past several years, there was advice sought with regard to an option agreement, either with the housing trust or select board, number one, I was not involved in it. And number two, there's no stake in, involved in that. In other words, if some opinion was sought or, or some type of requested legal assistance for looking at a draft option agreement happened, it's something in the past, it's not an ongoing thing. So, you know, I just, there's, there's a lot of really good, valid, you know, comments that are being made and people are acting in good faith. But I really have to emphasize that point. There, there is no, there is no option agreement in place. There are no active negotiations going on involving the developer or anything like that. There haven't been any meetings with the select board other than that public meeting, you know, that came up before when they were contemplating the comments letter to come back before your board. So, so that part, I, you know, I really want to emphasize is, you know, in my opinion, there's nothing, there's no there there when you're talking about any prior potential option agreement and any involvement either that I have, you know, with you in advising you in this application or with the fire chief or any other department head. Department heads have commented on this project based on their good faith, professional expertise, they've given you comments and thus, and you can agree with them or not agree with them, but, but there's not, there's no ulterior purpose to it, is, is what I'm saying. And I apologize for going on a little bit about it, but I, you know, that is something that really, you need to be clear about. That there's, there's nothing to do with an option agreement and any potential conflict of interest with a department head.
Okay, thank you for?
I just want to make comments. I don't want to go down there, but there, there was an option agreement. Yes, it wasn't signed. But my point on this, George, is not, not the fire chief, but everybody. It flows up to those same parties who were negotiating this agreement and undermining this board. There's no doubt about it. They can negotiate that outside of this process if they take it outside the 40B process. I said this, I've said this many times. If the town wants to pursue something different, negotiate them to take it out of the 40B and let their whole town vote on these zoning changes at a meeting. We certainly don't want to do this. But when the town is doing these things behind the zoning board's back, it's undermining our ability to do anything. And that is why this option agreement factors in. It most certainly does. It's just evidence of constant undermining on this board.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying there's nothing going on actively.
And the fire chief reports to certain, they all flowed up to the same person. And that's my concern.
Okay, we have, this is our final time. I, I don't want to spend time talking about that because that went away in August. I'd like to hear, give Mr. Zemicki, he's been waiting super patiently, as much time as you want to say.
Madam Chair, I don't have a, I don't have a comment on the, anymore on the option agreement. I just have one other question for George. Just back to this fire chief's letter. So we've had over time, a number of different fire chief and, and firemen make comments. Do we take them all together?
Everything that has been submitted has been proper to you. So, you know, that's, like I say, I, I, you can give it what weight you want. You know, and, and so you're, you're free to consider all the testimony that's come in.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to address Attorney Durensis's comments really quickly. Two minutes.
Okay. I really want to give Mr. Zemicki the time to speak. And then I'm going to, then I'll go back to you for Durensis. And then Alisa, and then we'll see if anybody has any final thoughts. And then we do have to wrap up, right? Because select board's in here after us. So, Mr. Zemicki, you have, you can go over if you need to.
I'll try to abbreviate everything.
No, no, I don't, I don't want you to abbreviate because you've been super patient. And if we go over for you, that's okay.
Okay. Jacques Zemicki, 13 Werewell Lane, I'm an abutter to this project. A couple of things that I'd like to bring up. One is the question of wells and when they were put in. Mr. Meredith, well, original well was probably put in, in early 90s. But when his mother died, they held on to the property for, he built a house for his mother on the property. Subsequently, he came back to town meeting trying to get it subdivided so they could sell her house. It took a number of years to do that, a number of town meetings. I think it may be three town meetings before they gave permission for him to subdivide that. At that point, he got an engineer. He actually had to separate, put in separate septic systems, which required him to move his wells. The only place that on his parcel that his house is on, that he could put a well is exactly where it's placed now. And that was, there was just really no other place. the other well, the Countess well, that was, that had a little bit more room to be around, but it's pretty much where it has to be too. And this, this was done by engineer that was looking at everything. I do not believe he was looking at the septic syst, no, septic system, the stormwater system as it was in place because maybe at that time it was in place. It was definitely, there were probably plans around for it. But the plans around, that might have been around were from previous ones which were showing dry wells rather than vaults. But anyways, that's a, that's a timeline thing and someone else can address that. There's been talk about the 100-foot circle and the 300 feet. 300 feet, indeed, it's 100 feet from structures that you really want to keep the water away from your well. The 300 foot comes as part of the health regulation, which was put in line regarding septic systems. But you've got to understand that septic systems, in most cases or almost every case, do not need to be 300 feet upstream of a well. The amount of water going into a septic system is 110, I believe 110 gallons per day, per bedroom. And the amount of water that's going into the stormwater system over there, per small storm like the storm we had the other day, that's tens and tens of thousands of gallons going in upstream. And so there's, there can be a really good argument to be said that 300 feet, well, there is actually a very good argument saying 300 feet is not enough separation between stormwater structures and wells, private wells. A couple of things come into mind. One is when you have the vault systems and you put a lot of water in them, you create what's called mounding. That can change, that can actually accelerate your groundwater in the direction it's supposed to be going. But it also can accelerate that water or have it not move in, in the direction the groundwater would be normally anticipated to move. There's, there's another issue with that in the sense that PFAS is now found in septic systems. So I expect soon we're going to begin regulations about that. The way water moves, how the groundwater moves through the hydrology in Nantucket is not very well understood. We do understand hydraulic conductivity, which is how fast the water has the ability to move from point A to point B. But that's really based on local geologic conditions and hydrological formations. In the outwash plain, which is where we are, we are in now, hydraulic conductivity can be from 50, 50 feet per day up to 3,000. I've seen actually estimates of over 3,000 feet a day. So you dump something in the ground. in the ground, and it can move 3,000 feet downstream or through the aquifer that far. In this particular area here, it's probably 500 to 700, depending on what layer we're dumping it in. But, yeah. And so just to, let's say Tom's Way, where we know PFOS is, for instance. I just started doing some geohydrology examination of that area. It's actually pretty complex. But one of the things is of note there is that, for instance, there's a really thick gravel bed, and some people, when they put their wells down, their wells are drawing water from that gravel bed. Gravel is very, very hydraulic. You're going to get more than 3,000 feet a day out of hydraulic, as opposed to, when they, and so when you put a well down, you put a screen at the end of it. Where that screen is, if it's in clay, you hardly get any water. If it's in fine sand, less, you get more water. Coarse sand, you get more water. So it goes up with particle size. So it's really based on where the screen is. But in general, the outwash plain here is, if someone asked me, and I wrote about this before, 700 feet a day. And it can be accelerated by putting millions of gallons in the water in concentrated places upstream of the wells. But if the water can get, if pollutants can get into the water, get into my well, they're also getting into the aquifer in zone two, which is against the law. A lot of, we've heard from a number of experts and engineers, and everything's always been conditioned about stormwater, is the stormwater, how we're handling stormwater through the system that's in the ground currently in searchlight crossing. And my question would be, and the question should have been, the board should be asking, is when water gets recharged from that system, is it polluting the aquifer? And indeed, it is. And I'm sorry, there's just, there's no way, there are literally tens of thousands of pages of, of science papers written about this. And indeed, it is going to end up in the aquifer. Stormwater systems, as we've been told, really don't deal with soluble things. And they don't really deal with small particles, too, which would be air pollution. And I wrote you, I've submitted about five or six things to you. One of it's about rain and pollution, and how it gets on small particles that are circulating in the globe. Most of those particles are toxic. And that's what's going into the groundwater. They are bound up a lot of times in the first three feet of the soil in sort of the clay matrix. But after that, in Nantucket, you hit the coarse sand, they're headed straight to the aquifer. And that's a problem. One of the problems with PFOS is, and I actually really haven't looked into other chemicals at this point, but PFOS is known, what's called an early arrival chemical. Once it's in the water table, it happens to move way faster than most other chemicals through the water table. I read, there was about 150-page mathematical paper on this, and I slog through the first 60 or 70 pages, probably 15 years ago, 10 years ago, to see, to see if it seemed valid, and it seems valid. And so that's something you have to consider, that PFOS is going faster, and there are chemicals that will go beyond the 700 feet per day that we would expect if PFOS was in the groundwater. You've asked about other ways of treating the water. So marshes, marshes, streams and marshes are really great ways to do this. I was involved in a project, consulting on a project in the 80s in England, where they were doing a lot of research on this. And I came back and talked to them in the 1990s. I'm sure things have changed a whole lot since then because we really didn't have the technical expertise to see things in part per million or trillion, sorry. And we do now. I wrote a little bit about papers about that. We did not know in 2016, we didn't have the technology to see the parts per trillion. That really only came online, or it's still coming online, but 2020 is about when that came online, so they could actually see all this stuff. So the size of the drainage swales, just offhand, would be probably an acre. If you wanted to treat the impervious surfaces over there and drain them into a bioretention swale that would hopefully bind up almost all the things, it's going to take an acre of a pond to do that. And it might be, I haven't been looking through designs on them lately, so you've got to understand that every X number of years, you've got to dig all that vegetation out, all the muck out, and you've got to replant it all. So that means actually the pond needs to be bigger. And back in the 90s, we weren't really thinking that far ahead. So I really don't know how valid that is anymore, as far as the size. But it would be a minimum of an acre. So the, I guess, the main thing is, is that if we're, if the science says that we are recharging polluted water back into the aquifer, then if we go into the 15% law, which also says we can't degrade the groundwater as the state water says, it makes no difference whether you're putting the stormwater system in or not, because you're still breaking the original article that all these laws were broken, were based on. And that's, this is going to be, this is going to be decided in the courts, I'm sure. They're going to have to look at all this, and they're going to have all these high, but that's where we're at. And the people I really respect about groundwater, mentors that I've had in the DEP system and other academia, have always said, the first thing you do is, are you polluting the groundwater? Period. And that's where you really start from, when you should be looking at these systems. And, yeah. And there were a lot of other things I wrote about, but that's the gist of it. And thank you. I didn't really mean to run overtime on you. I should have gotten up earlier. If, does anybody have any questions besides wanting to get out of here?
I just have one quick question. On that well, from your knowledge, I know what a spite strip is. I've never heard of a spite well. When they, when they put it in, I mean, was it incumbent on them to know what was happening next door?
You know, I would assume that the engineer would have done due diligence, but I'm also sure that, not sure, I have no idea. But I would expect, engineers are supposed to really look at the whole surrounding area. And they, they looked really hard because, for instance, one of the places Mr. Bracken suggested a well was in a former horse kraal, which also had the septic system in. So they would be putting their well someplace which already had possibility of nitrogen contamination and other stuff from septic stuff there. And, you know, it's really, but I have no idea. But I know it wasn't put in as spite well. If he, he could put it anyplace else, he would have. But he was really sort of forced to put it there from, from the engineering standpoint.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zamicki. And thank you for your patience. I know Attorney Haverty, you wanted to respond to some of Attorney Durensis's points, and Bracken, Mr. Bracken.
The thing about the spite well, we really think it's a spite well. The information was there. We looked at the design. There were other locations to design it. And after all the comments, we'll probably just submit something in writing to address.
Yeah, I don't, whether it is or it isn't, I don't think matters for this board, but everybody's entitled to their opinion. So, Attorney Haverty, please.
Madam Chair, I will be very quick.
Great.
In addressing Mr. Durensis's comments, I'm not going to address the majority of the substantive ones, but I did want to address his claim that this project will proceed using only minimum standards. And I just don't want it to be confused that our unwillingness to accept requirements and standards that are not imposed and have never been imposed on any other project in Nantucket does not mean that this is going to be constructed with minimum standards. This is going to be a beautiful development constructed with the highest standards. And as it relates to the comment that our unwillingness to make changes during this process violates the remand order, that couldn't be any further from the truth. We are under no obligation to make changes as part of this process. And I would note that a majority of the issues that the board is looking at, I continue to believe are outside the scope of the remand, because they're either things that were not addressed in the remand order, or the impacts have actually been greatly reduced, such as, as Mr. Durensis noted, the water capacity issue. Water use for this is being reduced from 42,790 gallons per day to 31,130 gallons per day because of the reduction of the original 389 bedrooms to 283 bedrooms. That's an improvement for the modified project. That also relates to the traffic issue that was discussed. And, you know, I've noted many times, as it relates to the stormwater, that the pervious and semi-pervious surface is also being reduced by just over 2,000 square feet. So again, it's our position that most of the issues that are being reviewed are outside the scope. We don't believe we're under any obligation whatsoever to make any changes as it related to them. So I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Alisa, you had...
I can wait till the next meeting.
Okay. So, John had to leave at 3:00, and my, we did not get to the point, I think we got everybody to speak who was on, had their hands up and was on our list. So we did not get to start talking about, gauge the board's opinion about how we feel about moving, what we're going to do when we move forward to deliberations. So I think we continue this till March 4th.
1:00 P.M.?
1:00 P.M. We'll, it's, and it's noon, and we'll...
Zoom only.
Yep, we'll get John Tumlin in, and then we can finalize and then close, that will, we'll close the public hearing at that point.
As much as I don't want to extend it, it still could be an option, right, for this board, depending on...
I guess.
If we, if we need, if we, if there's information we feel like we need that we're not going to...
Yeah, I mean, hopefully we'll get something on, from, first of all...
The 4th, for the 4th.
For the 4th. At least even an update on, yeah. All right.
Yeah, I'm not expecting that we'd ask for a whole another 60 days.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we can make a motion to continue this public hearing till March 4th, 1:00 P.M. on Zoom only. Would someone make that motion?
Aye.
I'm going to say, okay.
No, I'll make, did you make the motion?
She made it, she seconded.
Oh.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, so those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I am, so aye. No, I wasn't going to do vocal, I wasn't going to do vocal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That was a marathon. Thank you, Mr. Zamicki. I'm sorry that you were...